We will go ahead and begin, and we will start here at the right with Mr. Haley. So, Mr. Haley, the time is yours.
Thank you, Darrell. I first want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for having us here. I also want to thank U.S. citizens for coming out and supporting us, but also allowing us to view our opinions and our thoughts with you. I think this is very important. It's, I think we can all agree that there should be a lot more people here today than there aren't. My name is Vince Haley. I grew up here in Rexburg, what I call "central" Rexburg. A few of you know where that is. I'm the son of Preston and Mary Haley. Born and raised, like I said, went to Madison High School, served an LDS mission to Minnesota, returned and went to school at BYU Idaho. There's a few main reasons I am here today, running as a city councilman. First, as all of you that are here, I love Rexburg. I love the community that we have here. I love the citizens that we have here. I love the resources that we have in the surrounding area. As I've told a few people knocking doors, one of my favorite things on a Sunday afternoon is to drive 10 minutes up on the dry farms and be in the national forest, or to drive and feed the fish in Ashton. Those are resources that a lot of areas don't have in this country. And that is why I love to be here, that's why I love to live here with my family. Second of all, I was actually asked, or approached by Tisha Flora, another candidate, about running today. Tisha and I have conversed on a lot of different things, and she felt like I would be a good candidate to be here. I also want to serve. I'm here to serve. I'm not here to push anything political. I'm not here to make sides. I'm here to do what's best for the community as a whole. As a person that's been very concerned about the area, about the growth, but has not necessarily been involved in all those things, I feel like I'll bring a different perspective to the city council, one that is not currently represented as a younger person, but yet still somebody that's concerned, that's somebody that's willing to go out and act, that's willing to go out and get different opinions. I think all of us can agree, we love going door-to-door, even with the random questions we get, the golden eggs that we're supposed to have on every answer, we don't have that. But as a council, giving different opinions, giving different concerns, that is what makes a council a council. Stephen Covey has said that strength lies in your differences, not in your similarities. I see Rexburg as a hub of economic activity in the area. We can pull activity from Mud Lake, we can pull activity from West Yellowstone, we can pull activity from Driggs, but we have got to be proactive in addressing and acting in a way that gets those people to come here. We need to provide the opportunities for the businesses to come here. I don't think the issue is that businesses don't want to come here. Honestly, I believe that businesses do want to come here, and they look, but then they turn around after they see something. And I don't know exactly what that is, but that's what I want to figure out, and that's what I want to report to the citizens of Rexburg. I feel like right now there's a disconnect in the communication of the council to the citizens, and that's what I am here to do. If there is a solution, I will tell you as citizens. If there's not a solution, I will tell you as citizens. I will tell you what you can do to help bring businesses to Rexburg. We've been hearing it for years, we want businesses in Rexburg, we want better roads. It's a concern. There are a lot of different ways we can go about doing that. As a council, we will communicate with you, or at least I will, as to what you, on an individual basis, can do to bring those here. With the new soccer fields that we're building, I believe that we can market Rexburg to bring in large tournaments of soccer. I believe that we have the ability to be a hub of economic growth, a hub of economic activity, a place where people will want to come and walk and shop in Rexburg. And I believe that as a newcomer to the board, somebody with an outside opinion, I will be able to bring that to you. And I ask for your vote, and encourage you to listen to all of us and what we have to say. Thank you.
To introduce myself, I'm Justin Egbert, and I'm honored to be in this setting with these wonderful people, with all of you, in this beautiful building, in a great community. I love Rexburg, and like Vince said, I think all of us do, and that's why we're here. I grew up on a farm about 30 miles west of here. I have fond memories as a young boy of coming to town, Rexburg, making that 40-minute drive with my mother for school shopping, or swimming lessons, or go to the doctor, or just go to the drugstore. I learned then that Rexburg is bigger than the nearly 10 square miles that it fills in a map. When I became a teenager, my friends and I spent a lot of time in Rexburg. I'll spare the details on that one. Being much older and wiser then, I figured out though that my mother must have been taking a long way then, as it only took us about 32 minutes to drive this, and sometimes shorter if we were late. My friends were driving, of course. Later, I had the opportunity to attend Rix College, and being a student at a great school and living in the big city of Rexburg, I discovered that there is something special about this community. After a two-year LDS mission to Oklahoma and coming back to Rix College, I had an even greater appreciation for Rexburg. Now, this dates me a bit, but while I was in Oklahoma, which borders Arkansas, I realized that most of the up-and-coming cities there had a big store that I had never heard of: Walmart. I remember coming back home and telling my mom that I was going to buy Walmart stock. Short story, I didn't buy the stock, probably because it required money. I remember telling my friends that hopefully someday we'd have a Walmart in Rexburg. Mind you, I wasn't fortune-telling, but I was dreaming. While at Rix College, I met the girl of my dreams, Kathy Hammer, who is a lifelong resident of Rexburg. She consented to marry me. We have seven children, a son-in-law and 1.5 grandkids, who all live in Rexburg. We've lived here most of our married life and plan to be here forever. We also hope that our children and grandchildren, as well as yours, have the opportunity, if they choose, to stay here where their roots are. I've been fortunate to have employment in Rexburg. I've been in banking, real estate, and now BYU Idaho. I've been involved and have had great association with Boy Scouts, Rotary Club, and the Upper Valley Association of Realtors. I feel my education, work experience, and my marked interest in the future of Rexburg qualify me as a city councilperson. Thank you.
And thank you again to the chamber for hosting us today. My name is Sally Smith, and I'm running for reelection to Rexburg City Council. I was born and raised in Rexburg and have lived here my entire life. I'm married to Rob Smith, who is also a lifelong resident, as are both our parents and grandparents. We have three grown children and nine grandchildren. I graduated from Madison High School and Rix College and have been in the real estate profession for 30-plus years. My husband has been a farmer our entire married life, and so we are deeply ingrained in our community. It has been a great honor to serve on the council the last four years. Rexburg is an amazing place. For a city the size of ours, our assets are numerous. We have a state-of-the-art hospital, fully self-sustaining, an amazing new high school, the largest four-year undergraduate university in the state, a nearly completed new fire station. We are the 11th safest city in the nation, and most of all, we have wonderful residents who are hardworking and very talented. Serving my community in many capacities has always been important to me. Rexburg has provided me with a great place to live, work, and raise my family, and I want to give back. My mother, Ruth Smith, was the first woman elected to the city council in 1969. I have been involved in Madison Economic Partners, the Economic Development Group for Madison County, for nearly 20 years. I served as president for two terms and am a member of the Executive Board. I've been an elected Chamber of Commerce Board Member for six years and served previously as a liaison for MEPI. I've been the chairman for United Way in Madison County and a member of the Family Crisis Center Board of Directors, helping facilitate their move to their current location on Main Street. I've been an active member of the Upper Valley Association of Realtors, having served in all offices and as president twice. In 2012, I served as the first female president of the Snake River Multiple Listing Service. I've been the president of the city council for the past two years, having been elected unanimously by the council members. I feel that my experience has been a plus. I am knowledgeable about zoning and land use issues and am an advocate of personal property rights and personal responsibility. I understand that it's expensive to run a growing city, but I am conscientious steward of your hard-earned tax dollars. My vision is to keep Rexburg the unique, amazing place that we enjoy each day through smart growth and good decisions. I would like to share some of the things that are happening currently in Rexburg. We all talk about bringing jobs to Rexburg. In the past four years, we have added valuable jobs. We have new companies, including Zylan, Avantgard, Adoption.com, SSI, and First Light Energy, just to name a few. These companies require skilled workers and provide high-paying jobs for management positions. We have just completed a broadband study, which was initiated to explore the best way to bring high-speed fiber to Rexburg, whether it be through private companies or a public-private partnership. As a result, many of our providers have stepped up, and one in particular is now offering one gig service to Rexburg at an affordable cost to attract more technology. We have recently completed a transportation study to help address the future in transportation planning. At some point, there must be a second route across the Teton River, and as a result of the study, options for the future have been brought to the forefront. Be it east of town or on Fifth West, we can now begin to plan and save. One of my goals has always been to involve our residents more in the vision of Rexburg's future. A little over two years ago, with city council support, we undertook Envision Madison. I hope many of you, both on this stage and in the audience, participated in Envision. This amazing process brought citizens together to brainstorm for the future of Rexburg and Madison County. Verifying that the most important values of our residents are: a safe and secure city, developing our recreational opportunities, and maintaining and improving our relationship with the university gives us the city leaders input on going forward. Four separate citizen task forces were formed from the process and will keep functioning. Another way that we are involving citizens is through 10 different committees overseeing different facets in the city, in which they serve with a member of the city council and a staff member. There are many opportunities for service in our community. A few months ago, after a discussion with city staff about concerns over zoning, we created a zoning task force. This committee is formed of two from the city council, three P&amp;C members, and three staff members to streamline the ordinance, remove barriers, and strengthen certain areas if necessary. We currently have 29 zones in the city, and we need to streamline them. This undertaking will improve the ordinance, making it easier to understand and much less ambiguous. So you can see, many great things are taking place in Rexburg, and I urge you to get involved.
I'm sorry, I'm a little uncomfortable sitting there and addressing you. I'm already uncomfortable enough as it is. My name is William Harding. I am not from Rexburg. My pop is. He was born and raised in St. Anthony, but I did not grow up in the city. I'm an outsider. I have had an opportunity through my life to be a business owner, a private contractor, and a project manager for a national restaurant chain. I spend a lot of time interacting with big corporations across the country. I realize that they don't just come and take a random guess on where they're going to put down a new business. There are studies, word of mouth, and all kinds of facets to put together a package to decide if they want to come and gamble their millions of dollars on the community. I'm not sure, being an outsider, that Rexburg is meeting the needs of the investors that might want to come here. I would like to think that we can change that, I would like to think we can encourage that. I don't want my son to have to grow up and move away because there's no economy here, or grow up and work at a low-paying job. I would like him to be able to provide for his family. I've had an opportunity as a project manager to work with many different kinds of people, many different kinds of walks of life, many different kind of atmospheres and areas. I've learned how to deal with people, and now to encourage them and to lead them and to move forward and press forward in a common goal. I'm grateful for this opportunity to be here. I've always felt it was my civic responsibility to be involved in the community. I've been counseled to do that, and I probably wouldn't be involved now, but I have a dear friend, Mayor Woodland, that came down to my house about six weeks ago and asked if I wouldn't run. He asked for my help. I committed then on the spot to do it. About two hours later, I wish I hadn't, but I did. I am here. According to a national study from the Eastern Idaho Entrepreneur Center states that $3.8 million leaves this community per month. Those are dollars that are not spent here locally. I think we need to find a way to encourage business to come. I believe it should be an open, free economy. I don't have all the answers. Sometimes I don't even understand the questions, but my experience as a project manager has been to be able to find the answers, understand the questions, get a cohesive plan together, and to move forward. I would like to think all the businesses that I was involved in investment are all still up, running fine, making lots of money, but I don't know. I'd like to think the homes that I build are still standing, nice shape, best houses in the town, but I don't know. But I did everything I could to make them the best. As a project manager for the restaurant chain, I was involved in 150 different businesses. I think that experience helps me to be qualified to work for you, members of the city. I think everybody up here is qualified to act in the position of a city councilman. I ask for your vote. I think I can do an extremely good job. I have an ear, I listen to the community's needs and wants. I'm not afraid to work hard. I came here to take care of my parents as they were aging. We decided to stay and get my degree that I've never had, that I always wanted. I got my degree from BYU-I. I am now currently seeking a MBA from ISU. I'm about halfway there. I enjoy it, I enjoy learning, I enjoy the time that I have to spend here in this town. Thank you.
I too would like to thank the chamber for putting this form on. My name is Jordan Busby, and I'm seeking reelection for a seat on the Rexburg City Council. 26 years ago, my family started in Rexburg, and 16 years ago, after completing my education, I returned back to Rexburg and settled down with my family, and I've loved nearly every minute since. My reelection campaign centers on five core principles. Number one, we need to provide and ensure clear and honest transparency in taxing, spending, and planning. As a current council member, I ask questions in regards to the bills and invoices that I sign. I look at not only the large item expenditures, but the smaller ones that can easily be missed. Our chief financial officer has also followed the council's charge and has done a great job in making budget and accounting reports more user-friendly and easier to understand. Number two, I want to ensure the responsible use of tax dollars. A tax increase for you is a tax increase for me, and so I like to make sure that the tax dollars are spent wisely. Number three, with all the construction that has taken place and will take place, I want to make sure that we are getting quality work in both planning and construction. We need to do it right and not over. Fourth, I want to represent the citizens of Rexburg and be a conduit for the citizens to be able to voice their fears, concerns, ideas, and frustrations as a neighborhood, as a community, and as an individual. I still stand by my philosophy that we, W.E., are bigger, better, and smarter and stronger than I. As I have knocked hundreds of doors during this campaign, I have heard over and over that it does no good to come to the city council with a concern because no one listens. I want to continue to change that perception that some may have of City Hall and what happens within its walls. I would love to see the city council meetings be a standing-room-only meeting. It doesn't happen. Number five, I want to continue to build a strong working relationship with the three greats of Rexburg: the city of Rexburg, the Madison School District, and BYU Idaho. They are among the three largest employers in the area, and the action of one affects the actions of all. I believe that the current relationship between all three has never been stronger, and as we continue to work together, then I believe we can continue to make Rexburg bigger and better. Citizens of Rexburg need to know that I am 100% in favor of growth and future development because it's coming and can't be stopped. We must however make sure that planning is happening right now and looking at our infrastructure from sewage, water, roads, and business development opportunities to ensure that they will be able to, and they'll be able to handle and welcome future growth. Now, as much as I am in favor of growth and economic development, I am not in favor of lessening the core values that make Rexburg unique and the very best place to live and raise a family. Rexburg's designation of being America's family community and one of the safest cities in America are titles and accolades that I want to continue to hold on to and to have. I stand before you as an individual who does not have a personal or political agenda, but rather as an individual with a personal invested interest in Rexburg. It's where I live, it's where I work, and it's where I cultivate my family roots on a daily basis. Your vote for me on November 3rd will be a vote for hard work, ethical dealings, integrity, and honesty. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tisha Flora. I am married to a wonderful man named Jason Flora. We met at Rix College, and then he unconventionally waited for me while I served a mission for the LDS Church. Together, we have six children, ranging in ages from 21 down to our twin nine-year-olds. Our family has lived here now for 16 years, and we consider Rexburg our home. While I have never had any aspirations of running for Rexburg City Council, I do love Rexburg, and I have a passion for serving. I did have some individuals ask me to run, and while my initial reaction was no, I began to feel this deep sense of obligation to serve my community and to do my part. I've been blessed with many wonderful and hard experiences that have better prepared me to serve and develop the talents necessary for Rexburg City Council. Most recently, I've been serving as a commissioner on the planning and zoning, and there I've been able to study the ordinances and see what our community faces and citizens as they come in and express their concerns, and then try to make decisions that would be beneficial to the community as a whole. I am a backseat type of person. I like to be behind the scenes, and so one of the hardest things for me to run for city council is to promote myself and to share the things that I have accomplished, but I would like to share a few of those things. I like to speak from my heart because the projects that I've recently accomplished are special to me, and over the past three or four years, I've been able to fundraise, write grants, and secure and promote projects in close to a half a million dollars for this community. One of my favorite projects is the special needs playground found out at Burton Elementary Playground. This playground was started because a little girl could not walk and play with her peers on the current playground. And when the price tag of $250,000 came up, we got together and we decided it was worth it, and we did it. And we did it because when you team-play with other people and you reach out, then you become powerful. And I believe, as a city, we can become powerful. I believe that we can bridge that city and citizen. And as I've been serving on planning and zoning, I have noticed that many people do feel that they are unheard, and I don't think that's right. I think that we need to value our citizens, we need to help them feel needed, and we want them to feel that they are included in the decisions that are being made at city council. Recently, I had the pleasure of attending the community leaders meeting where President Gilbert shared with us the anticipated growth of BYU Idaho. And I believe that as Rexburg continues to grow, that the citizens are sharing two main concerns with that growth. I think that number one, they are worried about the safety and the integrity of their streets, and number two, they're worried about the safety and integrity of their neighborhoods. And I believe that priority needs to be given to those concerns, as our citizens are our taxpayers. As a platform, I believe in three main things. One, that we need to be more competitive. I know good things have happened here in Rexburg, but I believe that we need to be more competitive, and how I believe that is that we need to be more attractive to businesses. I believe that we need to ask harder questions. And for example, recently, we had an urban development come up near the new Walmart, and it was 109 pages. And I've studied that, and I called and asked questions, and one of the questions I said is, "Are we putting the tubing in for fiber optics? We've talked the talk. We say we want technology, but are we doing it?" And they didn't have an answer for me. I believe we need to be creative and use our citizens, and finally, we need to remain community-minded. We need to pay attention to the concerns our citizens have. I am grateful for the opportunity to run for city council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, candidates. I appreciate your opening statements. Just to explain this portion of the format is that I will ask questions from the audience. These questions may be directed to one specific candidate or to a group of candidates. You will have two to three minutes to respond to that question, and if there are any rebuttals, you've got 60 seconds to do so. This will be a general question to any of the six candidates. What do you feel is the most pressing thing facing the city? What are you going to do to fix it? We would like to respond.
I feel like the biggest issue, in a general sense of the word, is growth, but more specifically, what we're doing to not only alleviate traffic, work with our snow removal, our zoning changes, everything, I believe, almost all of our issues at this point in time come off growth. About a year ago, I stood in the council chambers and expressed my concern over a zone change between First and Second South and Second East. In that very meeting, the council expressed concern about the amount of traffic in that area, acknowledging that in the future, Second East would be an even busier street than it is now. However, and against the concern of the citizens of that area, they voted in favor of a zone change that allowed for, or is allowing for, a large commercial building to be built that will not only increase traffic, but will also take away from the neighborhood of that area. The word "infill" is often used by community members at this point in time, where we want to use "infill," we want to fill in the gaps of the community because it takes away from traffic. I agree with that. However, it needs to be smart, it needs to be planned. The decisions we make today as a community and as a council will not only affect our community today, but it will affect us 20 to 30 years down the road. So that decision on Second East, if it's built close enough to Second East, that building, it will not allow for the expansion of Second East to a larger street in which the city council thinks it's going to be needed. Again, those are the decisions, those growth decisions, that I think we need to really study and we need to look at as a community. That means long-term citizens, that means short-term citizens, that means everybody in this community. Thank you.
You may ask a question. You may ask a question. You can answer that same question.
I'll call this a rebuttal.
You have 60 seconds.
My rebuttal is I agree with Vince. Growth is a serious issue in Rexburg. It's coming. It's here. We've seen major growth over the last few years. In 2000, when Rix College announced that it would become BYU Idaho, my mother called me and told me Rexburg looks just like Provo did when I went to school there a few years ago. I don't know how many years that was. But it is growing, it is coming, and we do need to have that organized growth and we do need to be prepared for what's coming because it's here. We do need to have that smart growth that each one of these folks have talked about. Thank you.
Take a minute to talk about that because I was involved in the decision that Vince is talking about on Second East and between First and Second South. The closest residents to that area were actually in favor of something happening in that area and many times when these decisions are made, conditions are put on these potential developers that they will have to meet to make their development fit into the neighborhood, where the entrances are, how the properties are accessed. And we are very conscientious of that when we allow these developments that I've been involved in in the last few years. Our neighborhoods are changing. As I mentioned before on the transportation study, Second East is a mess. They showed us color-coded maps of the future routes in Rexburg and in 30 years, the worst color that a street can be is black and Second East is just simply black. It is our main arterial and on the north end, on the south as it goes to the college. So as those decisions are made for Second East, traffic patterns are considered and accesses and entrances to different developments, whether they be residential, commercial, mixed, or whatever they are, are always considered.
Thank you. All right. I've had a chance to just kind of take a look at the questions that we've received and just in full disclosure, we've got several that deal with a common theme. So I'm going to try and group these questions so that we have as much opportunity to hear the candidates talk about each of these concerns that's been posed. Okay, we've got, we're gonna focus on the four new candidates for just a moment. The question, "Other than when city business affects you personally, approximately how many times have you attended city council meetings in the last year?"
Can I go first?
Please.
I have not attended any city council meetings in the last year. And that's unfortunate. I apologize for that. However, I feel like I am a concerned citizen. I am aware of what's going on with my job, with my family, with the activities that we participate in. I feel like that I am involved and that I will obviously be attending a lot more city council meetings in the future. Thank you.
The answer for me is a number of times, a handful of times, both as a scoutmaster, bringing my boys to the council, being able to learn from that and teach them, but also as I expressed earlier, when I went to express my concern about the zoning change, I don't live in that area. I live on the completely opposite side of town. I grew up in that area. Did I need to be there to express my concern because it was going to affect me? Absolutely not. I actually was there to express outside people of that community, of that neighborhood, and that's what I did. I very distinctly said, "I live in the Summerfield subdivision on the west side of town and I'm here to represent people outside of this community."
Ms. Flora?
I have attended a city council a number of times and more importantly, I have been placed, I was requested to place my name on the email list with Mr. Blair K. and I receive the council agendas and the council minutes, which I do read. In fact, this last one was very interesting as we, as they discussed, the city proponents in their races, they talked about the cost of the races, they talked about the loss and do you realize that our city lost $12,000 on doing races this past year? I am aware of what's happening in the city council. I have read every minute of all of the agendas and I'm very involved in being informed of what our city does.
Thank you. I have not been to any city council meetings in the last year. However, I have gone to the city's website and read through the minutes of those meetings many, many times. The only meetings that I have been to that involve the city within the last year is zoning and planning.
Right, thank you. Follow-up question for the four new candidates. Following the experience piece, what makes you feel qualified to step into the city council position and to be able to do a qualified job without knowing the current issues being handled by the council?
First, I want to say it's not hard for you and I, even though we're not on council, to know what's going on. They make it very easy for us to look at the minutes, go to the meetings, we can be very involved. My second thought is, Darryl, I think there's a little bit of a hazing approaching us as newcomers to these questions.
The incumbents are going to get their chance here in just a minute.
All right, thank you. Currently, I work as a consultant to a number of trucking companies in the area. We've got about 600 trucks that we manage. We don't own any trucks, we don't have any drivers, but I manage the office of a company called Thircorp here in town. You wouldn't believe the messes that I have to figure out on a daily basis. A truck gets stuck at the port, he doesn't have his paperwork or crazy things happen and I have got to think through the issues. I've got to communicate both with the port because I often get a third-person story from the driver, from the owner. So I've got to go to the source, I've got to figure out the problem and I've got to act because that truck, if it's not moving, it's losing money. So the skills that I bring to the table are problem-solving, communication, the ability to figure out the issues, and how to be proactive in helping this company so that it doesn't happen again. Those are all skills that I think will be a great benefit to being on the city council.
You know, the qualifications listed to apply for running for city council is that you live in Rexburg and that you're 18 years, and I do meet both of those. Besides that, I bring to city council hard work, integrity and service. I believe those are my values. I believe that Rexburg, those are Rexburg's values. And while I feel like a normal person, I feel like representing what the average citizen desires Rexburg to be is why I'm running for city council. I graduated with a business management degree at BYU, but you know, honestly, my biggest strength is that I'm a stay-at-home mom of six kids and when I put my mind to something, I work hard and I will get a job done.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Harding, would you like to take some time?
Oh, certainly. Never pass up the time to talk about myself. As stated before, I think that I'm qualified to represent the community in the city council due to my experience as a project manager, dealing with everybody in different walks of life. Also because I was a home contractor, I was able to deal with people that gave me everything they had. They invested everything they had into the future, into a comfortable home that would meet and suit their family's needs. I believe I can apply that same thing here. Let me tell you another, a little quick story about another experience I had. I was able to travel around the world for quite a number of years being involved with the United States Air Force. When I was one time overseas in a place called Injilik, Turkey, I decided that I wanted to make a difference in that community. So I decided to look and see what was available, what could I do? There has to be some kind of contribution I can make. And there was a club there called the Enlisted Spouses Club. I decided to go there one day and one thing left to another, to a parliamentarian, to the president, and I was elected president of the enlisted spouses club. In that community, there were roughly 2,000 people, officers enlisted and dependents. They have a high school there. The high school students in sports have no opportunity for a scholarship. Nobody's going to go to Injilik, Turkey to check out a star quarterback or a linebacker or an end. We decided there is something we could do to make a difference. So I went ahead and submitted all the paperwork. I don't know if you've ever dealt with the government here before. I have. It's very difficult, or it can be, to have a carnival where we could raise money to give to the students that otherwise wouldn't have an opportunity for a scholarship. Over the year, I was president of that enlisted spouses club. We raised over $10,000 to give to students that otherwise wouldn't have that chance. I think I can take those same talents and attributes and apply them to Rexburg. I'm not going to say anything out there than what I believe. I believe in economic growth. I believe it needs to be planned, but again, I want my children to be able to grow up and to stay here. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, incumbents. If you can make a quick answer to that, that would be great. Go ahead.
Okay, I'll be quick. But I did want to share my, some of my strengths. I can't quite compete with Tisha as being a mother, but I am a father. I think that's, I think that might be the second best, which all of us are. But I do feel like I'm qualified in the fact that I have an education, but I've also been in those situations where decisions have to be made and have to figure out a way to make it happen. And I feel like my work experience, I grew up on a farm, I've had several other opportunities that have helped strengthen me, but mostly it's hard work and I've learned how to work and I'm dedicated to get the job done. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Right, incumbents, it's now your opportunity to be in the hot seat. We have three different questions here dealing with the same topic and so I'm going to select one that is kind of an all-encompassing question that will address these three. "What is your position regarding the city's decision to loosen the laws for the sale of alcohol within our community?"
I'll answer that in just a second, but Vince, if you feel like this is hazing, wait until your first public hearing. I think that the citizens know how I felt as I voted for that. I voted against it. I believe that economic development is coming and we don't need to lessen our values in order to attract businesses. I think had that been a unanimous council vote, I think the next ordinance change would have been liquor by the drink or lessening the ordinances to allow other businesses that come into town that may or may not support our family values. Thank you.
Well, I actually voted for that, so you've got a pro and a con here. We did a lot of research on this when this came before us and while this was going on. And most of the feedback from the community was either that they thought that this was a good move, mostly because they didn't care, or they didn't know that it wasn't already allowed. Reason being, most of the people in Rexburg don't go out to eat on Sunday, they don't go to the grocery store on Sunday, and so it didn't affect them really. The other thoughts that came forward were if you can go to Applebee's on Monday night, Thursday night, Saturday, you know, and watch sporting events and there is alcohol served, what difference would it make? Again, because most of the residents of Rexburg do not do those things on Sunday. I will tell you that again, with the feedback that we received to the council, most people either didn't have an opinion or didn't care. There was, there were a few and they did speak out and we did listen, but there were also a lot of people who conduct business, who bring people in from out of town that felt like that this was helpful to their business. And as far as being an economic development driver, we don't know for sure whether it is or whether it isn't. Applebee's has shown that they don't need liquor by the drink and they had told us and as many other businesses that possibly that would allow another restaurant, a Chili's, Sizzler, etc., to come to Rexburg, which we hear that everyone wants. So we did carefully research the decision. There was a lot of thought and a lot that went into that and I don't know how you viewed it since it happened, I can't really see anything different because if we don't go to the grocery store, we don't go to the restaurants on Sunday, then it doesn't really affect us. So I did vote for it and like I said, I have not seen a big change in how people look at our wonderful community.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will move to our next question. This has to do with streets and this will be open to any of our candidates and how they'd like to respond. "Will you continue the current practice of polishing the roads or will you actually plow the roads to make them safe?"
I'll take that. I'll start out on that one, Darryl. Polishing versus plowing, that's a million-dollar question. First of all, I think our street crews do a pretty good job. They do the best job that they can. I've had the opportunity to move snow with Gail Harding for a number of years and I can tell you that you can plow it, shovel the sidewalk and 10 minutes later, you're back to where you started. So there again, polishing or removing, I think we need to just continue to try to find the very best way to move that snow in a timely manner. And also educate our citizens and the new upcoming, our upcoming students that come to Rexburg that don't know how to drive in winter conditions, they need to be educated on that. But really, there is nothing you can do to fight Mother Nature. All you can do is try to clean up after she comes. We found that out with the flood. But I think again, our city crews should be commended to do a great job with the small amount of manpower they have. It's interesting, when we talk about moving snow, everybody wants it done, but that comes at a high cost and we need to decide what is it we're going to give up so we can move our snow. Anyways, I just think we've done a great job doing that and we'll continue to do it. So I guess we'll polish it a little bit more and maybe make some economic growth by having some skating rinks. I say that in jest, reporters, but I do think we need to just continue to do what we're doing and try to plan accordingly.
Thank you. Any response to that?
We have great respect for the city crews. They do a wonderful job and I tend to remind the public as we talk to them that there are a lot of cities that don't plow their roads after every storm and Rexburg does. We also have acquired a new piece of equipment that can load a truck in 11 seconds, something like that. So hopefully that's going to help in the future of picking the snow up faster. But I agree with Jordan, we see how hard those city crews work and you can't control the daily sunshine, which we love, of putting a coat on those roads and then... love, of putting a coat on those roads and then it re-freezing at nights. So I also think that our city does a wonderful job with snow removal.
Thank you. I'd like to, to make a comment. I heard a president of the church say at one time, fix it up, wear it out, fix it out, wear it out again. It seems like that applies here. I would like to renew the streets whenever at all possible, but if there's not the money in the budget to do it, it can't be done.
You know, it was interesting, Jordan started out, that's a million dollar question. I literally think it's a million dollar question. If you, if you look at the, the area that we live in, my wife grew up in, in Island Park, and they've got a lot of state funds that fund their snow removal. Sugar City doesn't have anywhere near the traffic that we have coming through our city all day, all night. We have a lot of traffic in this town. And it's either you have the road, you have the plow on the road all day, every day, and spend your million dollars, or you wait for the storm to end, and then you go after it. I'm not saying that it's not a concern. I think if you really look at what the city's doing now, trying to budget for that, and then acting when they feel is the best time, I think they're doing an excellent job. And I want to give them a round of applause for that. Okay, we'll move to our next question. And Mr. Busby kind of broached this. Has to do with preparation of our city. Many cities have been prepared for natural disasters. Just a year ago, we had another flood in Rexburg. As a council person, what are you going to do to ensure those living in the city are protected?
I'll go ahead and start that again, unless someone else wants to. We had the opportunity to have a flood mitigation committee, I guess you might call that. And we worked with the two areas that were hit especially hard during the flood. And we've done some repairs as a city for possible future flooding. And I, I think that was a good start on that. For me personally, as a councilman, I can tell you what I was doing during that flood. I was out with my pump, going down the street, pumping out people's garages, houses, basements. I did that till, I don't know, way early in the morning, until my pump broke. And then I got another pump and went back out. We were keenly aware of the tragedy that happened there. And, you know, the fault, where it lied, I guess it lied on God, because he sent the rain. But at the same time, I think we're planning. We hope we never have a 100-year flood, but we had two of them within a two-week time span. But I think that the flood mitigation committee, as we met with the mayor and other people, we've made changes. The pumping lift station there in the Mill Hollow subdivision, we've brought that up. We've, we've made some bigger drainage ditches, and we're cleaning out our canals a little bit better, and hopefully we'll not have a flood when it comes again. It'll probably never happen again. But if it does, I hope that we're prepared, and we're going to continue to be prepared on that.
I like Jordan, have been involved in that. The night of the flood was a very interesting experience for me. Jordan was out pumping. The mayor was out looking around, and so they couldn't find him. So as council president, I was called to go to the response center. And that was in a room in the top of the courthouse. I believe Todd was there with us. And it was the bringing together of the police, the fire, the county, the city. And what a great experience it was to see how things, how an emergency is handled. I know that it's been practiced many times, and let me tell you, the response was great. The communication was great. There were people out on the streets knowing and reporting back as to what was to be done. So this was really a good experience for me, that I wish many of you could have, just to see how the city pulls together. And again, the other thing that really stands out in my mind, the city has done things to, to alleviate problems in the future, although like Jordan says, if you get that much rain in 45 minutes, you know, there is going to be some flooding. But there have been things that are accomplished and have been reported back, so that if it were to happen again, or any other devastation such as that, the city, the county, the fire department, the police department are all on top of that. But the response was really, really great, and that was a good thing for me to see.
I, as we were talking about that, I, I was aware of, of that flood also, and very involved in, in doing some things. But it also made me think about 1976, when, when the Teton Dam disaster happened. And I think a lot of us remember that. But, but I was just thinking today, you know, what would happen if, if that were to happen today? Our city's a lot larger than it was, the community, a lot more people. Would we still have the miraculous outcome that we had then? And, and I think that we would. And I, I'm, I'd also like to, you know, to, to commend the city for the things that they have done. And maybe there's more that can be done. I, I don't know. But I, as far as, as far as I go, I will, I will look into that and make sure that, that there aren't any more preventative measures that we can take. And, and I, I appreciate the work that they do, and, and it's, it's fun to, to listen as they describe the, the work that went in, and, and the synergy of the county and the city and the citizens. That has to happen in, in a lot of these situations. Thanks.
I don't have a rebuttal, but I just want to clarify one thing Sally said, when she said the mayor was out driving around. He was out knee-deep in that water with his wife. They were both out helping, so we appreciated his leadership on that. He was out, not just driving around. That's how I got my pump out. He told me where to go, and so appreciate the mayor for that.
Thank you. You know, insurance agencies refer to events like this as an act of God. And they handle these situations much differently than they do any other claim. I think the important thing is that we learn, and then we act going forward. That's really all we can do from these experiences. And if you think that Rexburg is the only place that had problems like this, you weren't paying attention to the news. Pocatello has a road that continuously floods on heavy rain days. Twin Falls had a car dealership that not only flooded once with their cars on the lot, but flooded twice that same summer. Again, this is not an issue. It's an act of God that rain is coming so fast. Again, the only thing we can do is learn and go forward. Thank you. Okay, we have exhausted our time for answering the questions that were submitted. If your question was not read and responded to, I would encourage you, as a citizen, to engage the candidates on a one-on-one, so that you can make the most informed decision when it comes time to vote. All right. We will start now with our wrap-up. We will give each candidate three minutes to provide a closing statement, and at, at which time we will conclude our forum. We will start with Mrs. Flora at the end, and we will work towards the podium. Ms. Flora?
Whether we are compelled as citizens to promote arts, recreation, sports, or political views, we each contribute a piece to the community that we call Rexburg. Each of our citizens, I feel, need to be better valued, feel needed, and that we can bridge city and citizen. I believe that we can do this by genuinely communicating with each other, and problem-solving the issues that we do face. I believe that in order for us to maintain our standard of living, we need to pay attention to our neighborhoods, pay attention to the needs of the schools, and pay attention to our family-centered values, and continue to promote those. Our community was based on the values of integrity, service, and hard work. And I, I would like to represent those values on city council. I promise to do my best to help our city to be thriving and to be more competitive, to be creative in its ability to problem-solve, and also, finally, to be community-minded, that we pay attention to those things that our citizens and our taxpayers are concerned with. I love Rexburg. I am so grateful that our family was able to raise our children here. And I think that we need to be able to continue that legacy so that others also have that opportunity. Thank you.
Again, thank you to the chamber for hosting this. This afternoon, you have heard from six different individuals with different backgrounds, degrees, and personalities. But we all have one common goal of making Rexburg the best it can be. We have also talked about concerns and problems and given our best answers. As a council candidate, I am not, I am not promising that I will be able to solve any or all problems, but I can only promise to study the issues and make the best possible decision and vote at hand. It has been a great honor and privilege to serve as a member of the Rexburg City Council. And I pledge, if I'm elected for another term, to continue to do my very best in representing the citizens of Rexburg and being their voice at City Hall, ensuring transparency in taxing, spending, and planning, and continuing to build a stronger relationship with the three greats of Rexburg. Thank you.
I'm grateful to be here today also. Like I've mentioned previously, most of my time on this world have not been spent in a community like this. I love this community. I love the example of the streets and the flood. What happened, you know? Other places in this world where I've lived, everybody would have got wet, but not here. It doesn't happen that way. Somebody gets a pump and goes out. Somebody goes out and is walking around in the mud all night long. Somebody else jumps on a committee right away to see what they can do to resolve the issues of the community. This community is a great community. The community is full of cooperation and compassion for one another. I'm grateful to be part of it. I think the values of this town with respect, and compassion, and love are all things that we can contribute to a small-town feel. But those are not a small-town feel to me. That can be how it's, you feel in any town, because it's what's inside of you. It's your heart. It's your compassion. It's your willingness to jump up, move forward. Don't wait for somebody else to do it. It's your willingness to act. I'm grateful to be here. Thank you.
I like Jordan. Again, would like to thank you all for coming, and thank the chamber for holding this forum. The three points that I have put on my campaign material and that I have run on are knowledge, experience, and commitment. And I'd like to talk to you just a minute about my commitment to the people of Rexburg. When I was elected four years ago, I made promises to you and to myself. I, I vowed that I would, would attend city council meetings. And over the four years, I've only missed three meetings, which I will tell you is much better attendance than I had in high school. I, I vowed to always be prepared for meetings. We're given our material ahead of time, and before each meeting, I have always read through everything that will be discussed at the meeting. It, it makes it so that I probably ask your questions, and some do, but when I ask questions, they're important ones that, that I think need to be answered. I voted on decisions that are best for the community as a whole, which is sometimes very difficult with a room full of people. I've attended all the budget meetings, which is a commitment we make each May. And we each attend meetings over the, budget meetings over the departments that we have oversight on. And have always been a participant in making sure that those budgets are most cost-effective. As the council president, I've been able to meet with the auditors, which is a two-hour interesting meeting before the audit is even presented to the council. I have, I have been in charge of drive-arounds, and we have tried to see the whole city. That helps with economic development, street planning, future areas of growth, and we've set time aside to meet with all department heads to discuss their wants and needs. I want to continue my service to you by serving on the Rexburg City Council. Again, we all love Rexburg, and I do as well, deep in my heart. I'm asking for your vote on November 3rd. I have a listening ear and an open door, and I want to continue to give back to the people in the city that mean so much to me.
Thank you again to the Chamber of Commerce, and thank you, Daryl, for not hazing us too bad. We appreciate it. I'd like to thank my family and friends who have supported me in this endeavor, and also like to thank these fellow candidates. This, this isn't as easy as Sally makes it look, but it's, it's, it's fun to be a part of this. And, and I also want to thank them for, each of them for being such great people. And as Jordan said, we all love Rexburg, and we all want the best for this community. I'd like to thank those who choose to serve our great community. And I appreciate Jordan's rebuttal to Sally. I think it kind of went unsaid. When, when we know, we know Mayor Woodland, and we know he wasn't just out driving around. We know he was taking care of us. And he was assessing our needs. Thank you. We appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor. As we move forward, we need to look at facts and ordinances and dig a little deeper. For example, I love the fact that Rexburg has been touted as having the lowest median age in the nation. Fantastic. And I'm proud to say that I've helped with those numbers. However, what if that number were a little higher, and we weren't the lowest in the nation? What if we had opportunities for more graduates to stay in this area? What if we had a little more gray hair, and with it, what I call tribal knowledge? I think that would be a blessing for all of us. I'm a glass-half-full person. I'm an optimist. I, like most of you, have dreams and goals for our community. We see the vision of a vibrant, growing, and glowing community. But what if the grass, what if the glass springs a leak, just like we've talked about? What if the glass shatters? Are we prepared for a hiccup, or even a crisis, like we've talked about? We've proven over and over again that we are prepared. And that I, and if we stay on the course you're on, we'll continue to do that. Rexburg will flourish. And I would love to, the opportunity to be a part of it. I love that Rexburg is America's family community. I'd appreciate your vote on November 3rd. Thank you.
Again, as has been said, thank you for the chamber. Thank you for you as citizens being here today, even though you don't have a, you're not, you don't have to be here. Thank you for your time. Like many of you here today, I'm here because I want to see some changes to the city council, and I feel that now is the time. I'm here to serve. I was taught that if you want to make a change, then you have to act. I'm here to act. And I feel like Rexburg is on a tipping point. You know from past voting and council events what the two incumbents will vote towards. If you want somebody on the council that'll give you a new perspective, someone that has been very interested in the community events for the last several years, and someone that will represent Rexburg as a whole, then I'm your guy. If you want to get the same results as have been represented in the last number of years, then you know who you need to vote for. It's that simple. I want to listen to what you have to say as citizens of Rexburg. Whether the city acts in accordance to your opinion or not, your opinion still strengthens our decisions. Every person that pays taxes in Rexburg has the right to be listened to, and the right to express their opinion. I will listen to you, and I will act on what the community feels is best. I will challenge the status quo, not in a negative way, but that's what strengthens a council. I'm excited to possibly represent you on the Rexburg City Council, and I ask that you get out and vote, that you tell your neighbors, your friends, your coworkers, your church members to get out and vote. It's an opportunity. It's a freedom that we have, and it's an opportunity that we have to live up to what we know as a constitution of the United States of America. And I ask for your support and your vote. Thank you. All right. I want to thank each of our candidates for taking the time to prepare and come and share their insights and views with us as citizens of Rexburg.